All right, I would like to call to order the Westfield City Council Finance Committee Meeting of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's five thirty. Um, first on the agenda is the roll call vote. So councillor Bean.
Here.
Councillor Sullivan.
Here.
Okay. Also like to acknowledge um the other people who are here. Um, Marissa Cologne, the scribe. Um. Tammy Teft. Chief Bellier, Robert Bishop, Matt Barnes, Brian Ferret, Chris Willenberg, Lenore Bernashi, Mayor McCabe, Councillor Mello, Margaret. Shannon Berry from the Westfield News, Fran Kane, Vicky Morrow, and it looks like we have one person for a public comment. Um. So next on the agenda is, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the previous meeting minutes from January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, councillor Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councillor Matthews Kane, yes. So minutes are accepted three to nothing. Next on the agenda is public participation. I do have one letter to read, but um before I do that, is there anyone here? Yep, I see a hand raised. Um, turn on your video if you're willing to. Thank you. Hi, um can you just state your name? And your address? And um there is a three-minute limit on how long you could talk, so.
Sure, yeah, I'm Travis Lucia. I promise I won't take up the full three minutes. Uh, I just wanted, this is my first finance committee meeting, so uh I won't take up too too much time and uh and I just want to talk specifically about one item on the agenda. Uh, I am the International Association of Firefighters Local eleven-eleven President here in Westfield. Uh, and I specifically wanted to speak on uh agenda item number uh thirteen. Uh, it is. For your security for the fire stations. Uh, last year, I sent an email to uh Chief Egloff about the security of the building. Uh, and while I won't go into all the details, uh, we obviously have millions of dollars in equipment in there, but my my big concern is of the for the safety of our personnel. Uh, we have personnel come and go over the years, uh, whether they choose to leave on their own accord or they leave for uh retirement or anything, and. An fire department with a free key to come back in because we have uh a passcode for the doors uh that doesn't change regularly, it doesn't change easily. And so uh I know that Chief Egloff shares the same concerns for both the security of the uh individuals that are there twenty-four-seven, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, as well as the millions of dollars in equipment. I mean, on the agenda is also equipment for an engine, and I believe that's in around the sum of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's just the tools that go on the engines. Um, we have thousands of dollars in tools that. That vehicles that could be easily driven out uh by anybody who who. Okay, so I just wanted to uh press upon uh the finance committee how important it is for us to protect our personnel and the equipment that the city purchases uh for us to use. It's all specialty stuff, a lot of it. We can't go and buy off a shelf or grab off a shelf. Um, and I also would like to say too, because I I've heard this come up before when the security issue came up, is that frequently we'll see those giant doors on the front of the fire station open uh in the middle of the day. So how is that for security? But I can assure you, if the doors are open, we're down there and we're around. And we like to keep those doors open because we like to invite the public in, but we'd also like to make sure that we know who is coming in and out and when they're coming in and out. So that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone else who'd like to participate in public comment? Can raise your hand, wave. Okay, but before I close public comment, I did receive a letter from somebody and I'd like to read it. Um, and it is from Patrick. Patrick Lustig, and he. He lived on Street Extension in Westfield. And he wrote, Bridget, since I will not be able to join tonight, I just wanted to take an opportunity to really introduce myself and explain what this contract and education incentive means to me. And he's referring to the police contract. I have recently been a full-time police officer for the city of Westfield for almost three years, as well as over a year of experience as a part. Which I did when I held a full-time position at the YMCA as the Director of Camp Shepherd and Youth Programs. At the Westfield PD, I have been an active member of the station and I'd like to think as a valuable member of the department. I currently serve on the Special Response Team SWAT, the Retirement Committee, and the ATV Unit. Since the start of my full-time career, I have been in good standing and have gone out of my way to better myself in every way possible, including being trained in the new DART addiction program. But this is also not just about me. All all other officers are affected, I can confidently say, are valuable members of the department. I could list all of their accolades, but I'd particularly. Officers who recently rescinded his offer to join the state police and instead now just was accepted to be a field training officer for this department. A major part of this decision was hopes for this new contract. Although I'm aware whatever decision is made is not personal and based on what the city can afford, a decision against the new contract most certainly will make valuable officers feel invaluable and in the long run could prevent more valuable officers from accepting a job in Westfield and persuade current valuable officers to take a job in another jurisdiction. As for me, I graduated from Norwich University in two thousand and thirteen with a degree in military history and a minor in criminal justice. The reasoning behind my degree is simple. And a criminal justice career fair hosted. That Norwegians told me to go that route. This is due to the fact that the most important aspects of policing are either taught in the academy, learned on the street, and learned through personal experience. For me, that is the case. History was recommended to me due to the fact that you are able to research for the facts and excel in writing. These are attributes that are used every day in policing on the streets and writing reports. The minor in criminal justice was chosen because I took the same exact classes as a major in CJ. The only difference was the core classes, which I took in history and the senior thesis projects. Otherwise, these two areas of study are completely identical, which you can confirm through the course catalogs of Norwich. Um, once again, I know these decisions are not personal, and I appreciate you taking the time to interact with me over the past few weeks as well as to read this email. Although this email is about my past, the eight other officers this decision will affect are equally, if not more qualified than me, and are also full of great education and experience. I hope you and the council will take our experience and education into consideration while making this decision and realize that we are just as valuable as someone who holds a criminal justice degree respectfully, Patrick Lustig. So that was my the letter. And is there, has anyone else joined though while I was reading? Who'd like to? Person? Could you either? Turn on your video? Or? I'm gonna take that to be a no. Okay. So moving on. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the recently signed Police Officer Coalition Contract, which will become effective July first, two thousand and twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. What?
The chair, if if we can, uh, before we make a motion, is there a way to present? You know, I know chiefs here and also um uh Vicky, our auditor, to just discuss the numbers and process?
I I would also like to have that discussion, and I'm glad you raised that point. I didn't want to vote immediately, but I was told I couldn't, we can't discuss it till I have the motion on the floor.
Right.
Correct?
So, yes. So do you want the motion and the affirmative or the negative?
Well, we can amend, can can we put the motion on the floor and amend as after the discussion?
I'd I'd move approval then.
Second.
Um, okay, so, oh, no, we're not voting yet. So discussion. So I the um, I asked the chief and. Yes, there they are. So could we've, I know we've changed the numbers a little bit. Um, can you talk a little bit? And Vicky Morrow is also here to talk. Can we talk about um the numbers that we are currently working with?
Um, sure, Madam Chair, um. So thing with the details, because that was one question that you you had, um, like, who is the major detail, like vendors for the city? This, and that's not all of them, but those are the major ones for the city. So I know that was one thing that you were looking into. Um, so obviously the G and E would be the most. Who's the um for police details and um DPW was next.
Then Verizon. Is this the number that you're looking for?
Yeah, I so I I I did have some councillors send questions that they wanted answered, but I um was just talking about in general, like, how much is this going to cost? Like, um, and maybe Vicky, maybe instead should could talk about, you know, we talked about like, what are the budget increases for fiscal year twenty-three with this new contract? What are? They've, Vicky, could you present on those?
Sure, thank you. Um. So we've done a lot of um calculating, going around. Um, thank you Captain Petoniak for, you know, he put his budget together and we were able to work off of that, um, since he was already kind of calculating that budget um for twenty-three. So it's more accurate than previous numbers because I was using what was budgeted in twenty-two and trying to extrapolate that out for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. But since we know the officers, for the most part, that are going to be there for next year, we were able to get, um, you know, a pretty uh more accurate number. So the two percent salary increase based on the officers that are in the budget for twenty-three would cost a hundred and fifteen thousand, one dollar and sixty-eight cents. And then if you um add the eighty-five cents to. Who are in step nine, it would also include four officers who weren't already in step nine. So that's part of the part of this. And it also includes the education incentive that's affected by the eighty-five cents. And that number is sixty-five thousand, seven seventy-five, seventy-four. But out of that sixty-five thousand dollars and some change, twenty-two thousand dollars is for those four new patrolmen that moved into that that new um step nine who weren't in there before. The new education incentive for those um varying degrees that weren't in the contract before, um, at the ten percent rate, which is the first year, is fifty-two thousand, eighty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. And then to. We're at fifteen percent to seventeen and a half percent for twenty-three is forty-four thousand, three twenty-eight, sixteen. Um, and the out-of-grade, which were increases um to those, um, I think it's C, A, and then um, these are the shift referentials. That is in the budget currently at twenty-two thousand, five twenty-four, sixty-four. So the total for twenty-three is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Now, part of what's in there, and the chief and the captain can probably um explain a little bit better, is that there are officers in there who are in the process of getting degrees. So you have to budget the top portion of those so that you're not short-funded later on. Um, there's also money in there for um the potential two new officers and the the people who are in the academy. So you have to budget at those top levels in order to make sure you have enough if they happen to get it. And that's included in this two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. I'm hoping I got that right, Jay.
That does sound right.
Okay.
Because we're going from sixty-four officers to sixty-six, so we're budgeting for sixty-six. And like I said, and like Vicky said, you know, if someone said they're going to get a degree, um, don't have to budget for that, even though they might not get a degree um for the whole year. And I still have to budget their salary into um our budget. But two officers adds, you know, a significant amount of money when you're putting two extra officers on the department. So that is all part of that that budget. Those were planned into that budget.
So the two new officers are part of the twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-dollar figure?
Yes. So that's. So that'll be above what we've ever had. We had sixty-four officers previous, we'll have sixty-six um budgeted, uh, with three people in the academy um coming up in June or July, depending on what academy they end up going to.
And they don't come in at the bottom grade either. One one officer has um ten years on his department, the other officer is uh roughly two or two and a half years. So their their time is going to be considered when they come over here. They're, so that's already.
Okay. Right.
These have been transfer officers um from two departments. So they'll come in academy-trained and and ready to go to work. Um, so that, like you said, those are budgeted in that in that total.
Okay, great. Councillor Sullivan, did you have a question?
I did. So what's the cost in twenty-four and twenty-five? Just just the bottom line total cost increase?
So in. Twenty percent. And then incentive is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-two. So say a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for twenty-four, you know, based on who's in there. With those um education incentive increases and the two percent is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Because in twenty-five, you know, in the contract, you're going from from eighteen to seventeen and a half, and then you're going from seventeen and a half to twenty in twenty-four. But in twenty-five, it's really just going to be two percent because you're already at that twenty percent.
Wow, plus the increase in the education incentive.
Yeah, the education incentive will be two percent of whatever the the.
So 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 all in for this union, you're talking six hundred thousand dollars over the three years, the life of this contract. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I I have some questions that other councillors asked me to ask. And um the first one, it's it's more like a legal question, I think. Has the Police Commission reviewed and recommended this contract? And I'm not even sure. Can you explain? No, because they don't have authority over it, right?
No.
Okay. Um, another question somebody submitted is. Does this cost the city money or will the cost be passed along to the companies paying for the detail service? So I think this is what um Captain Petoniak was talking about earlier, like the figures, like, so part of it, the increase is the detail service costs go up, but we bill them out. But how mu- who who are we billing when we build that increased cost?
Right, you build a vendor for that, so they would pick up the cost.
Okay, and their question was, like, who are the vendors? Was their?
Right, and like, obviously, G and E is the biggest vendor in the city just because of everything that they own. So that, you know, they touch a lot of different things, you know, when these jobs come in.
Okay.
And then the DPW is like the next one, but a lot of those are under the state contract. You know, DPW is working for the state.
Okay.
Sometimes it's DPW being billed directly, or it could be DPW to the state, you know? And then Verizon, they work a lot for Verizon themselves and through the state for state projects, moving poles or adding stuff or um, so they they're a big billing factor. Uh, the paving companies, Northeast Paving, uh, Marais and Gom, same thing, you know, sidewalk projects, paving projects, or some are, you know, paid directly to the city. They're coming up with the money, some of it is state grant money. Uh, but ultimately the vendors pay the price, you know, the the cost.
Okay. Councillor Bean?
Yeah, just just a quick. Details though. Right, details, yes.
Outside duty detail.
Right, okay. So am I missing something about this contract, though?
Well, everything that that affects the detail rate, obviously, the.
Oh, on the rig.
Salary sets the detail rate.
Understood, okay.
But but it but it in no way, shape, or form mitigates that six hundred thousand dollars?
No, no, that's not part of that.
Right, okay. So I just didn't want anybody confused that somehow we're passing along to vendors. We're not. We're just, we're also increasing the detail costs, but we're not mitigating that six hundred thousand at all.
No.
That would be great if you could figure that one out. That would be awesome.
Well, they they do have a seven percent fee that some companies do char- get charged, which does go back to the city. Uh, but that's for, you know, like Verizon, say, depending on what they're doing, their seven percent of admin charge that goes back to the city to the general fund, but.
And if they use a cruiser, if they get charged a cruiser, the cruiser money goes back to the city.
Okay, and I have two questions from other councillors, but they're like almost the same question, so I'll just ask one, I'll ask the other. So let me say, can you break down how each of the different changes helps slashes improves the city, or what is the added benefit for the citizens of Westfield to these changes? Like the changes in the contract they meant specifically? Can either of you address that?
Yeah, I would say, you know, the education, I know we spoke about this last time, the education portion, as um Pat Lustig had mentioned, is hopefully going to keep officers here at our department. They're not going to go looking someplace else, go to the state police for more money, better benefits. And it brings people here. We have several officers that have requested the transfer here. We have two that look like it's going to be a done deal. Um, hopefully this month or early next month. And and that's a lot of savings for us in a way because we don't have to put them in the academy for six months and then go to field training for fourteen weeks. You know, and it takes a good year to get an officer kind of learning, you know, what is policing and how to get going on themselves. That just for whatever reason didn't like where they were working or and they're looking to come here and we're. In a nice department, and like I said, it's a great recruitment. So I would say the education, it it has some, you know, obviously it has some cost, there's no doubt about that. But um it it, we're looking at it to bring people to our department that want to work for us.
And you and you see it almost immediately right from their original interview. If you um, I've seen a lot of interviews over the years and and the quality of candidates that we're getting today, they're just so sharp, so well-spoken, and uh they're all, they're all highly educated. I don't, I don't think that I would say ninety-five or percent or better all have bachelor's degrees, excuse me, bachelor's degrees or or higher coming in. Uh, but you can see the difference just just when they talk, just from their experiences, how they hold themselves. Um, I think just from day one, you can see the advantage of the uh educated officer.
And another thing I would say too with looking at the stipends, say, midnight to eight always kind of was behind the rest of the units for stipend. I don't shift, or if any amount of time, it is a tough shift to work. And what happens is the older guys, most of the time, there's a few that like to stay on it for whatever reason, but most of them can't wait to get off it. So you constantly have young kids on the midnight to eight shift, so they don't have those mentors there to train them because the old guys, as soon as they get a chance to get off that shift. One reason why they raise the stipend is to try to keep people on that shift with a little bit more time on the job, to help train these new kids when they come in and and, you know, have some mentors to look up to. Um, so that that's one reason why they need to raise that.
As with the bureau differentials, we get uh a lot of officers aren't all that inclined to go into the detective bureau or traffic bureau or community policing. Um, there's a lot more work in those in those uh units. Um, typically, they're dated. And some guys don't want to do anything. Have tend to their families and uh in in other interests they may have. So um just the incentive, the the extra monarial incentive for these guys to to go into those bureaus um has been an attracting factor.
Okay. So i- if there are no further questions, do we want to discuss our positions at this point?
I I I'll I'll discuss um through the chair. Uh, you know, this is a, this is a comment more than a, uh, this is a statement more than a a question. This this contract for me um financially seems to be a very large burden. Um, this is a little different than past years. The amounts have significantly increased. Um, when we finally got the right numbers in front of us, um, I can see and and, you know, as far as the negotiation piece, we we don't do that. We voted up or down. We'll, you know, hold my comments on the process and how this was done, but I'm very concerned about the end game here when it comes to the finances. Um, I don't think the city can afford this particular contract at this point. Um, we just talked about the numbers year to year. Um, we are, um, we can tax, you know, two and a half percent. Um, you know, when you start talking about other pots of money, those are one-time funds. They're not meant for recurring costs. I've usually been pretty consistent about that. Um, so when it comes to the numbers and the facts of the contract itself, and in the end, um, and not in individual situations, not about the two percent, not about the education, not about uh the step increases, any of that, because I I'm not going to venture that, you know, if it's better or worse in other communities or not, that's not my. Can the city afford this at this given time? My opinion, it cannot. Um, so I'm not going to support this moving forward. With that said, um, this is probably one of the one of the first times that, you know. Um, unfortunately, this for me is uh too big a number at this time for me to support it. Thanks.
I'd I'd like to echo some of councillor Bean's concerns. Um, and just for people who are listening, we've actually discussed this contract over two meetings and we have received um we received a notice from the legal department. And um, you know, our question was like, do we, what is our role as city council? Um, and they responded, this is again from John Fitzgerald um in the legal department. He said, in response to your inquiry regarding the authority of the council to reject the proposed collective bargaining agreement. Power. General law, chapter one fifty E, section seven requires city council approval for all proposed CBA cost items. Um, and he gives a uh earlier ruling on that. Upon ratification of the union and signature by the parties, the city council as a legislative body has sole authority to accept or reject the proposed collective bargaining agreement. Um, so we definitely we are able to, but then I I think many people are aware of that case in Methuen, and it's a very different case than this collective bargaining agreement. Um, but um the Methuen mayor and and city council approved a contract, and the office of the inspector general wrote up a report on it, and they said. Former mayor and former and current city councillors violated the duties of care and due diligence that they were elect, that they owe as elected officials to the residents of Methuen by negotiating and approving the superiors contract, either without understanding the financial impact of the contract or by understanding the financial impact and approving it anyway. And, you know, like for me and that, the the key phrase is financial impact, like we really, really have to look at the financial impact. And I I sat down with the captain and with the auditor, and we went over the numbers yesterday. And I think the most concerning number for me, e- when I first was on city council, people said, you know, obviously the budget goes up every year. It goes up roughly like two to two and a half percent because, you know, we're limited because of proposition two and a half. And I was told to like, look for that number, and if something's lower or higher, ask questions why. Five on the increase is tw- two hundred dollars for the contract. And the complete budget from last year for police is eight million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand. And the complete budget from last year for police is eight million, three hundred sixty-six thousand thirty-six dollars. So if you express the increase act against that fiscal year twenty-two budget, that's a three point five eight percent increase in the budget, which is pretty far over that two, two and a half percent goal. So my comments have nothing to do with the content of the budget. Sorry, not the content, the content of the contract, excuse me. I I I'm I'm not even thinking about what's inside of it. I'm just thinking about what's the fiscal burden on the city and it, to me, it's 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 three point five eight would be more than um I regret to say that I feel like I can't so um, I'm echoing many of the comments of Counselor Bean. So that's my position. Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, so um, I don't disagree um, with any of the previous comments from maybe uh, the chair or Counselor Bean. Uh, and in fact, the three point five percent is only actually this contract with this union and not even the others within the police department. And they will absolutely have repercussions down the road with the other unions as we enter negotiations with them. That's just a fact of life. Um, I do um, have a real issue with the process on this. Um, the fact that this was signed off on December twenty-second week left in the term of the previous administration, I think um, raises a lot of flags. Um, I think it was was rushed. I think the timing was terrible. And I know there are some counselors that are working on um, limiting some of the power um, if they've lost an election, and I will support those movements when those come forward, but that isn't on tonight. So I do think the timing on this and the negotiation on this um, does raise those red flags. I agree that uh, there are serious cost implications here. Um, and I think at the last meeting, I had asked the chief, what happens when you come in? And you're looking for, you know, a six or seven or eight percent total increase to your budget. Um, and I don't think that's going to be there. Um, and so there's going to be cuts. And having seen this before, I think the first two things that are going to go are the two new officers. Because you're going to have to make those numbers work. So I do think from a financial point of view, um, this was it isn't with the current administration. Um, I am in fact going to vote yes to approve this. Because I do think that when the city enters into collective bargaining agreements with a union at the table, you go in with mutual respect on both sides and to be able to come to an agreement and bargain in good faith. Um, I will not attribute whether or not everybody bargained in good faith on this this deal or not, but I think that the the mayor and the unions negotiated it, and I think it would set a really dangerous precedent for the council to be a backstop on that and begin to interfere uh, in those negotiations. So I am a little, I understand that of the thirteen counselors, I may be the only one that shares this opinion, given where I've sat. But I just think if we're going to have fair bargaining, um, then I think the administrations need to be able to go to the table in good faith and bargain with the unions. So um, for for that actually is a process reason, um, I'm going to support the contract. But I will be a bit of a bellwether, and I think that the chief will be making serious cuts otherwise um, to his budget, um, if in fact, this goes through.
All right. Any other further comments? Because right now we have on the floor a motion to approve. So we can change the motion? Or we can just vote it through as it is?
I guess it just depends on how you want to take it to the floor of the council. If you want to go in with a recommendation to not approve, then I would um, accept an amendment to have the motion be to not approve.
I'll make a motion not uh, make a motion to not approve the police contract. I'm sorry, starting, should we put the dates in? Starting July one, twenty twenty-two.
And I will second that in order to move it forward.
Okay, so now now just procedurally?
Yep.
Okay, so this vote is to change the motion to not approve the contract. So Counselor Bean?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
No.
Wait, are we voting to change the motion or are we voting on the motion?
You're on the the amendment.
Oh, then yes. I thought I thought you were just cleaning it up. Okay, yes.
And then I'm and I'm also voting yes to change it to not approve it, and then we're going to vote on that, correct? Okay. So now we're voting on the mo- not to change the motion, but to the motion itself, the motion has been amended to to not approve the recently signed Westfield Police Officers Contract, which will be effective July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
No.
Counselor Matthews Kane? It's two to one. All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so number six on the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of sixty-two thousand dollars from free cash to purchasing department repair and maintenance account.
So moved.
I I feel like we're doing this a little backwards. I I I don't know why.
The motion, the motion's supposed to be on the floor first.
I I comment, second it and then I'll comment.
Second.
I did ask several people and I was told I have to bring the motion also feels backwards to me, but I guess that's the rule.
That's the law department.
All right, I did not, I checked with
Roberts rules, you can't have discussion unless there's a motion on the floor.
I will check with legal next for next meeting.
Okay.
I have been told many conflicting things on this issue, so I will double, triple check.
Welcome to my world, Madam Chair.
I'm learning a lot. I love it. So um first for discussion, um, either um, Tammy or Brian, would you care to comment on this?
Sure, I'll have um, Brian comment on this because this is a project that he's been working on now for for quite some time.
Okay.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this ask that we have put forward is uh, encompasses seven buildings um, that is currently in our building management system. Uh, that building management system, which is currently provided by Siemens uh, industry uh, has gone end of life. This we knowing end of life. And their system that we currently have is no longer supported by Windows ten. And this is the next system to upgrade to, which we would have to have done at any at some point in time regardless. Um, so it takes care of the airport, city hall, the senior center, the police department, Little River Fire Station, Western Ave Fire Station and Southampton Road. Fire station and I'm sorry, Western Ave Repair Garage, not a fire station. Um, the school department has already started swapping your buildings over to the new system. Um, and that has already been taken for my uh, funds that they have secured uh, on their end. Um, so this is just the balance of our buildings to clean up and um our network, so that's all on all in one area uh, that can be better accessed and supported.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Sullivan?
So oh, you may have missed it. What's it, what is it going to or what's the upgrade to? I'm now what we're using for uh, going forward. That's a Lenore question. All I know is that uh, I believe two years ago or a year and a half ago, um, when Windows ten went end of life uh, from a Windows standpoint, not from a city standpoint, is we could no longer have that over the internet, which means that our buildings can only be accessed from the building locally. And getting support out for that now, the system that we currently have in place through Siemens is also no longer supported. So we're getting to that point now where we don't have outside help to help fix our building management systems. What the building management system does is you're heating your A C throughout the city for all the buildings that I just listed and then various uh, school buildings as well. So it's a big, it's a pretty big undertaking for what we have. And and you can access it remote, correct? Or you're not, you you should be able to access it remote. Correct, and I believe Lenore probably wants to weigh in on that one.
If I recognize Lenore, hello, hello.
Hi. It is not Windows ten. It is out of life a few years ago. The server has been isolated, so it cannot get out to the internet now, but we can still use it internally to manage our systems. So the upgrade is to upgrade it to Windows two thou- uh, Windows Server two thousand twelve or sixteen. And I think it's going to two thousand sixteen.
We're upgrading to a six-year-old system?
No, well, uh, many times that the many time server licenses can stay out there for years. Windows two thousand and sixteen has a an extended lifespan on it. I think it goes um for at least two more years. But it's also the components of the server themselves, and we have to upgrade to that.
Could I just ask if if it's only going to go two more years and we're going to pay sixty-two thousand dollars to do that, if we pay something more? Can twenty twenties?
Yes, actually, I just got a text from from one of my network administrators, and we are actually going to scheme.
Well, there you go.
I think Counselor Sullivan wants to be in the twenty twenties.
Uh, no, I just, you know, I I just, you know, for a couple of more dollars, do we buy longer period of time? Is it still only two years that you were buying here?
No, it'll be longer than that.
Okay. All right, I I trust you.
And just before I call Counselor Bean, I um just for the minutes Counselor Figgy um, joined the meeting. Um, Counselor Bean, you have a question?
Just a question and a well, a comment first, then a question. Um, first of all, we've been underfunding the department for for years and to be honest, I I wish we were doing more. So hopefully this budget cycle will will yield some of some of this free cash that we have and really get up to date on a lot of our systems. Uh, no fault of the department, Lenore, obviously, you've been really good about putting stuff in front of us. It's just for some reason, we have a hard time passing those items. Uh, so I would, I'll be strongly recommending that we approve this even on the council floor, but um is there anything annual costs that are associated with this?
So Brian, do you want to talk about the fact that we're looking to to possibly go to a subscription-based um, support system for for the system?
Yep, so outside of this particular proposal, this is all hardware and capo costs. The ongoing subscription costs we have been looking at with Siemens so that we don't fall behind um, like the city has in the past, so that we get current upgrades. And I believe that cost was around six grand uh, per year, which includes them coming in and doing maintenance on the system. Um, from a computer standpoint, from a point access um, standpoint. So getting all that done, we'll be able to have more reps where we won't have to do this capital costs that are so expensive this this quick in advance, although the system has been up since about two thousand and eleven. And we haven't done any major upgrades to it. Uh, I believe I've misspoke Tammy on that one, but
No, just you've yeah, you've done some updates, maybe and if we can scrape together the money, you've you've tried to get somebody to come in and look at everything and make sure things are running.
Then this does include training for our personnel as well.
Great. No, thank you. I'm good.
Okay, that being the case, so this is a vote to approve. Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three, nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thanks, guys.
Okay, um, next is item number seven. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of forty-seven thousand dollars from free cash to Technology Center replacement equipment account to replace switches in the tech center. It'll be divided up twenty-two thousand, oh, sorry, twenty-two thousand to the tech center and twenty-five thousand to city hall.
So moved.
Second.
Second, whichever.
Motion made and seconded.
Whatever Marissa wants to do.
Twice, we did.
So first, the discussion.
Can you repeat that one?
Just flip a coin. So Lenore, can you explain?
So it's pretty cut and dry. It's uh, replacement equipment costs. The switches in the technology center are core switches through which all of our traffic flows. Um, all our sites connect to up to the tech center. Then they go out to the internet. Um, the switches up there right now are five years old. While they're still good switches, they don't have the capacity for the increased bandwidth that we're sending out through them and the needs of the city to support it. Um, the new switches will have multiple ten gig ports on them to help balance the traffic coming in and out of the city. So that's what the initial one is, the initial switch. Um, the city hall switches are to replace the switches that are located down in the assessor's office. It the assessor's office feeds up all the floors in city hall on that end of the building. The switches there are ten years old. They're workstation switches. They can last ten years. Um, we are having issues with adding all the new phones to the systems, the upgraded phones, the computers obviously still having issues with so the request is to upgrade the five switches that are there as well. Over at the end of last year, um, we were able to scrape together the money in our accounts and we replaced the main switches in city hall, the the media room switches, which serve the other half of city hall. So all those were replaced this summer.
Are you adding to the the switches in the tech center or you're replacing them?
We are replacing them.
You're you're replacing them. And is part of the need for the increased bandwidth because of COVID and like what we're doing right now, like doing everything virtually?
It's not, it's not so much because most of this is done virtually outside of the network. It's inside of the network. We increase with during COVID, and it did happen this way. Anyways, the school department greatly increased the number of Chromebooks. Every single Chromebook has to flow through our network out to the internet. Um, we went from fifteen hundred to two thousand Chromebooks to post-COVID of about five thousand Chromebooks on the network. Those are all web-based devices. They all have to flow through our network. The school department is on Google. They do Google Classroom, all their curriculum, most through the network to get out to the internet. On the city side of the house, we just transitioned our email over to a web-based email as well. So that's hosted outside of the city. There's more and more resources that require us to flow through the network to get out to the internet.
And one other clarifying question, just when I read what was on Council Share and the issues with the phones, are we replacing the phones or the new switches will help with the new phones?
So what we found is that the the phones were replaced at towards the end of last year. The phones we had in place were eleven-year-old phones. So we did replace those phones. Um, the original phones had speed limitations on them. The computers ran through the phones to the switches. And it was slowing down the computers as well. So we replaced the phones after about eleven years, as I said. But working switches don't have the power capacity to support all the new phones and all the connections needed. Um, they call their phones their VoIP phones, their voice over IP, which basically means they're computerized phones. And they get their power from their connection to the switch on to to power all the phones. Usually it works, but we've had instances of power outages in the city and city hall where sometimes the ports blow on our switches and because they have a power surge for some reason, and we can't use that port anymore. So we have to shuffle things around so the phones will work. And it doesn't happen all the time, but it does, it has happened um, a a few times.
Any further questions? Okay, so we have on the floor a motion to approve. Um, so Counselor Bean? Um so Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes, motion approved, three to nothing. You. Next, um I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to Treasurer's Department Building Account for Improvements to Treasurer's Office.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um first discussion, Treasurer. Are you here? Can you tell us what you'd like?
Yep, I'm here. Thank you. Um so what we're looking at is in the Treasurer's Office. Uh we have a a large counter storage type um piece of furniture that's been used uh when you first come into the office. And what we're looking to do is just improve, you know, the look there and the the security of the office. Um it's a big piece of furniture there. Um it doesn't provide any type of uh physical barrier between, you know, people that come in and then the the staff in the office performing their tasks. Um the reason for the amount of fifteen thousand is that's just an estimate. Um there was. Was to install a gate back in March of two thousand twenty-one. Um that quote using the same woodwork that's used in uh the counters of many offices in the building, like clerks, the collectors. Um which that wouldn't have matched the current cabinet or uh unit that's in there. But that type of woodwork, it was over forty-six hundred dollars. Um so right there, we stopped moving forward with this. It just seemed way too much money. Um um so what we're trying to do is look at various options now, including using the existing counter. Um purchasing a smaller counter. And then with both options, what would be the uh capabilities for adding a door or a gate-style system? And our office has been working with uh Tammy and Brian Frett, uh just to make sure, you know, we're getting, you know, good quotes. Um meeting the building requirements and compliance requirements um so that we don't pick. And we don't have to redo anything a second time. Um but while also looking that if the function of the office changes or something within our office changes, that it's still gonna be a usable um change to the the space that we currently have.
Can you talk a little bit about how it's gonna improve security?
So right now you could walk in our door and just walk right into the office, right to where the desks are that um both the assistant and the clerk are sitting and and performing their. Thing is to install either a door or a gate-style system there. And we're just not sure what it'll be allowed for attaching to what we currently have or using. Um attaching to a new piece of furniture there um between, you know, attaching to the wall or attaching to the furniture. So that's the part we're working with um several vendors to get ideas and designs from them, just to see what what we can do or what we can't do.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
I'll just make a comment through the chair. Uh yeah, I see a lot of Treasurer's Office offices in my job. And um what we have right now is pretty scary, to be honest. Um some of the stuff that I've uh have seen, you know, even just local communities around us, even Northern Connecticut, it sometimes they just have a window uh with a door uh and. Now, right now is the vulnerability is not acceptable. And, you know, there's probably a few offices. Uh it would be nice to kind of package stuff up, to be honest. There's a lot of offices out there right now in City Hall that are 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 exposed to um individuals or the the unsafeness of 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 the office. So I I it's unfortunate it costs this kind of money to do these things. Uh we all can, I I think, agree that it's expensive. But uh it is what it is, and I would I would support this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have on the floor a motion to approve.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three to nothing. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, next up. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of ten thousand dollars from free cash to Animal Control Department Full-Time Salary Account.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um so are for our discussion. Um we have. Can you explain and and I'd like to thank you. Um you provided a lot of documentation. Um I'd love if you could explain what you need and um talk about some of the research. You did extensive research into this and tell us what you found, please.
Sure. Um so the ten thousand dollars that I'm asking uh for is for a five thousand dollar increase in salary for the two animals. We currently have one animal control officer um in our, in the process of looking for another one. Um the current salary. And, you know, it's just the. Towns in the area are making a significantly higher amount um starting. And many of the surrounding towns are doing, you know, a similar job as to what our animal control officers are doing. Um many of the surrounding towns aren't also tending to animals at the shelter. Um that's an. Just are having to do. Um it has been several years since the starting salary has increased. Um and we've had some qualified applicants that have turned the job down because of pay. Um which also goes into account, you know, the the hours that animal control officers are asked to work. Does include holidays, weekends. Um it includes on-call for, you know, night shift response. Um and I just, I think a five thousand dollar increase. A better quality of applicants and a higher number of applicants. And I think it shows our current animal control officers whose, you know, job includes, you know, out of the ordinary hours and. You know, situations similar to what our police officers are being exposed to. Um on top of, you know, dangerous animals on a daily basis. It does require. House in the position. And I think uh an increase in salary would just, you know, reflect how important the job is. And, you know, have us keep good applicants around.
Okay, thank you. Robert, would you like to add?
Uh first, I'd like to jump in and just say Margaret has been a phenomenal advocate for her department as well as her employees. As we started digging into this, she started letting me know everything that they do, what they're paid for. A few things kind of stuck out. Number one, these employees. Values are exempt, and they are governed by the Fair Labor Standards Act, the FLSA of the federal government. The federal government actually sets a minimum for how much we can pay a salaried employee. It's uh probably a lot less than most people would think, but we have to pay them a minimum of six hundred and eighty-four dollars a week in order to be in line with federal laws for saying that they are exempt employees. Uh at thirty-five thousand dollars starting for these salaried employees with the city, they are not making that much. You're actually making six hundred and seventy-three dollars a week. So we're actually out of federal compliance with these positions. So we need to raise them to that level at the very least more. Thirty-five thousand dollars for family of three. If somebody is married with a family of three, also is just barely above the poverty level for the state of Massachusetts. We're having these employees come in and again to Margaret, she has absolutely educated me uh on everything animal control does. Not just working weekends, holidays, odd hours. This isn't a typical working at an animal shelter job. These employees are out pounding pavement, beating the streets, doing everything during the course of the day. And I think that we owe it to them. Uh not only to provide this raise, but to make sure that we continue this raise in the fiscal year twenty-three budget and look at further increases to bring them up to where we show them that they are valued and appreciated as employees.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I actually have just a couple of questions, but actually, one of them is to. You actually, when we came in looking for the twenty thousand, which we approved last Thursday, indicated but using uh Indeed and Glassdoor that you had actually gotten very good candidates and we're gonna be able to fill this position. So what's changed between now and the twenty thousand that we approved last week?
The twenty thousand from last week is meant solely to advertise all positions across the city. Animal Control was one of these entry-level ones. And actually, Margaret and I spent time this afternoon at the tech center uh interviewing a qualified candidate for that job right there. This is to actually take those two positions for animal control and make sure that we get them to a living wage uh so that we can better retain them after we do bring them on.
I I'm all good on that, okay? I just, I'm totally, in fact, you want to tell me it's not forty thousand dollars a year, it's more like forty-five? I'm good with that, too. But the representation that got made last time is that you had really good candidates. So to now come in and say you need to pay this in order to keep the candidates, I think is just a little problematic. Um so then uh the other one is, I'm just wondering why we're making the adjustment with, you know, what what in effect is four months left in the fiscal year? Why now and not just address it in the budget with the appropriate living wage, which I'm all in on? They're very hardworking. It's insulting at the thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So I'm all good on raising it, you know? I'm I'm sold there. But why now as opposed to just dealing with this in four months in the budget?
Absolutely. I think if we first look at the amount of turnover that department has right now. Uh I think they're bringing in people, but they're absolutely not staying between the hours and the compensation for that. When you get down and you talk with Margaret and find out the amount of job duties that these employees do for the city, we're getting. Will not retain these employees moving forward or to have them leave. I think right now that this is a way in order to keep them in. We've got the money for advertising to bring them in. Now we have to work on keeping them.
Thank you.
Um I I'm going to be supporting this between getting it into federal compliance, the turnover and the excellent research you did. Um I will be supporting it, but I also have some questions. So will this be budgeted? Will this be in the budget going forward?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And what department does this fall under?
Animal Control actually falls under the Police Department at this point in time.
Okay, so that's a further increase under the Police Department? How does that work then?
Um I mean, I do my own budget annually. Um I my supervisors are the police captains and police chiefs. But Animal Control does have their own separate budget.
Okay. Mayor McCabe, do you have a statement? You raised your hand.
Yeah, yeah, their budget is actually a different line item budget than the Police Department budget. So under the Police Department budget, there are three different budgets. There's a Police Department budget, the Animal Control budget, and the uh Traffic Supervisors budget. So technically, she's under the Police Department, but her budget is different. It's a different line item altogether.
Okay, that, thank you for clarifying. Okay. And 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 I would have been supporting it anyways. It was a curiosity question. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve um the ten thousand from Free Cash to Animal Control. So Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three to zero. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next, item number ten. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of seventy thousand dollars from Free Cash Account to. And who has this? Shanna. I thought was gonna speak on that.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
Sorry, I lost track. So second, so motion made and seconded. Uh so the discussion. And I thought she was here earlier.
She was.
Okay, so this happened earlier at another, one of the first meetings, somebody didn't show up. Can we just, can we um?
I'll make a motion to take this item out of order and put it to the end of the agenda.
Yes, excellent. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Well, she made and seconded. Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes, she may have just, she may have just popped on.
Oh, I think she did.
Okay.
All right, just go to eleven.
Just go to eleven.
Just go to eleven, okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of three hundred thousand dollars from Free Cash to Airport Purchase of Services Account for Design Phase of Taxiway B five.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. So discussion. Chris, good evening.
Good evening, Finance Subcommittee. Um we have a request before the Finance Committee and ultimately the City Council to um appropriate approximately three hundred thousand dollars towards the design of a new taxiway. We've had uh multiple interested parties uh reach out to us recently for some new hangar development. Um as part of our airport master plan and layout plan, we identified an area that's located just south of um what's called Ross Aviation MRO. It's a piece of property that's located where three sixty-five recycling, just north. And just south of the Ross MRO. Um with this design, um we need to access the site with a new. Had the developer would build their hangar, their apron, uh their their site work, but we need to provide a taxiway. For process is to get um a design underway. Um potentially, we're looking at new lease revenues, depending on the number of hangers in. That's sixty thousand dollars a year. Uh we would also have the opportunity to increase our fuel flowage fees. Um which could be anywhere, depending on the aircraft operators, could be three to five thousand dollars a year in fuel flowage fees. In addition, property taxes would be levied on these buildings. I don't have a number on what the property tax would be on new hangers. But um that would be included. Uh the positives with this also is we would be increasing the number of based aircraft and number of operations at the airport, which also helps us in getting additional grant funding for infrastructure improvements at the airport. Um so that's kind of an overview of the requests this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Um you answered the first one, which is gonna pay for itself. Um so two, any chance there's uh state or federal money for any of this?
We are planning to utilize state, um more likely state than federal, on the construction phase of the project. And the fact that the city would upfront basically and cover the design cost puts us in a better position to have the construction phase covered. Depending on the amount of money the state has, we could ask to get the design reimbursed. So there is a possibility. Um but it'll all depend on the available funding at Mastod for uh to try to get reimbursement on that design.
Great. And you are a master of that, so thank you for that. And I just wanted to be clear, and I don't want to wordsmith it. But you said, you know, about three hundred thousand, we're approve, the vote is to approve three hundred thousand, so that's gonna cover what you need?
It will. I need to finish the scope and work and fee, so I have an estimate from our on-call engineering firm. We haven't negotiated the final contract. It'll go down if, depending on the services. So I made sure there was enough to cover the design. You're welcome.
Um I I I have a question. I I again, I I was interested because it was gonna cover itself, but then I realized it was just the design phase. Like, what's the worst-case scenario? Like, how likely is this?
Well, we've been. Pretty well so Barnes for accessing uh construction funding for projects at the airport. Um this is an economic-type um opportunity. We would be adding potentially um ten to twelve new jobs to support these aircraft facilities. We are a a major economic engine for the Commonwealth, so tho- those are things that the state looks at. Also, based in our operations, that puts us in a better position to compete for the construction phase. So we have cost estimates of, and once again, the construction cycle is, it's very difficult right now for construction phase. Funding estimates are ranging from 1 million to 2 million. In my letter to the mayor, I went with 1.5 million. The state has various construction. They can determine what your local share is. It could be every, anywhere from this case scenario, 100% state funding to, you know, pavement can go for 97.5%. It could go as low as 20%, so for a local share. So if you use that 1.5 million dollars, it could be 32, it could be zero if it's 100%. It could be 32,500, I believe, if it's at a 2.5% or it could be 300,000 if it's at a 20% local share.
Okay, and I know we've been very successful in the past. You know, I went to the groundbreaking and, but it seemed like a lot of that was from military? Or have we been as successful getting grants for just pure early as opposed to military development?
We, we have over the years. The airport has, you know, besides the, the economic impacts, we have also for infrastructure improvements. But yes, I, I think our track record, I, I can follow up before the council meeting on our grant awards, but I think the track record over the last probably five years, we've received over 20, 20 or 25 million dollars in grant funding. And we've received a significant amount recently.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. And again, and being on the council only two years, I don't have that like five-year history in my head.
Okay, we, we actually have grant projects all the way back to the, I believe, 90s. We've been tracking all our grants, so I'll give you the full spreadsheet.
You don't have.
It's, it's fine. That's already developed. We have it in our database, so.
Okay. Counselor Bean, did you have your hand raised?
I just, other than a comment that I think this is one of the first times that we're, we're actually, Chris is actually asking money from us. Usually it's a grant that just gets accepted and we move on. So I appreciate your work, Chris. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So to approve the $300,000, Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three to nothing.
Thank you very much, and I'll follow up with that information.
All right, thanks, Chris. Okay, Shanna, are you here?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I had a joint on my iPhone, so apologize. I'm having some technical difficulties tonight.
Okay, and do I have to go, just a question and process? Do I, do I have to make a motion to go back to, how do I do that?
Yeah, you make a motion to go back to item number 10.
Okay, I like to make them, oh, I can't make, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move, so move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so now we have to vote on the motion to go back to number 11. Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes. So, um, and now I think I have to make the motion. So I'd like to entertain motion.
No. Um, move approval of 70,000, appropriation of $70,000 from free cash to the Law Department Purchase of Service Account.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes. Okay, Attorney Reed, can you explain this appropriation, please?
Sure. I'm going to try to be brief. This issue is going back to the 80s. Um, in the late 1980s, there was a condominium project. It was called City View Commons. Um, and for whatever reason, I see, I see Counselor Sullivan.
Going to fall over.
So I know that there's some historical knowledge here, so well, I tried to give you the, the Reader's Digest version. So for whatever reason, and I'm not aware of whatever reason that was, the project failed. The result was about 25 units with different added layer of complication, where there's one individual attorney Frank Sayah had acquired interest in some of the units and various mortgages. He either was assigned the mortgages, had the mortgages assigned to his plan. There were a number of instruments of taking, I think about 13 of them, that have pending complaints in land court to foreclose on the city's tax liens. However, even if the city was successful in foreclosing on those liens, what would end up happening is a patchwork of ownership. I don't know the exact acreage of the parcel up there. I did not have that information on the GIS. And without looking at every single individual deed, I wasn't able to determine that for tonight's meeting. But it's a large parcel off of City View. So we would own a patchwork of it as opposed to owning the entire thing, which wouldn't do the city any good at all. There, again, there is extensive complications and extenuating circumstances, giving the assignments to Mr. Sayah of the mortgages in either his individual capacity or, or to the pension plan. And to that is he filed for Chapter 7 bankruptcy in 2014. His assets, which were the lots and the assigned mortgages, were included in the bankruptcy estate. And then unfortunately, Mr. Sayah passed the waiver. It's not known the status of the bankruptcy action or the status of any probate by his heirs. So the appropriation request before you tonight is an all encompassing solution to this problem property. Our office has been working with Sedell and Sedell. It's a law firm that does specialize in this type of work. And they had been, they've been working with Attorney Phillips back in 2014 and kind of outlining, you know, the steps to take to, to clean up this property and to get it to be city owned, where we could package it up, you know, issue an RFP and, and hopefully dispose of it and have it back on the tax rolls, either as a successful development project. You know, zoning wise, do in that area. So city ownership of the entire property. It's not going to be an easy or a quick fix. The $70,000 is for Attorney Sedell to track down all of the answers to the status of bankruptcy and the probate, to follow through on the current tax foreclosures that we have pending before the land court, and to walk the city through the remaining steps. There are some parcels that it's not known at this time if there's any actual tax takings on them. They may be, you know, delinquent, but we don't have the takings done. Determine what impediments might be and identify the next steps to be able to have full city ownership of the property in order to be able to submit, do an RFP and to or to put something else on that property and put it back on the tax rolls. So this is going to be probably a multi-year approach. The $70,000 is the estimate for the entire, the entire thing, including all of the court filing fees as well as any publication costs that would come along with that. So it's been a big problem for a really long time. And Ms. Sullivan's reaction when I said City View Commons. So it's, it's been out there for a really long time, and I think it's just, you know, we haven't really had the funds to be able to deal with this, or, you know, my office doesn't have the capacity to do nothing else for quite some time. So again, we appreciate the support and being able to hire Attorney Sedell to clean this property up for us.
So.
Just a second, just for the record, Counselor Morgan Eller just joined the meeting. And Counselor Sullivan, do you have a?
Yeah, I, unfortunately, I do have a bit of a history on this and it's definitely going to be a few years. So I just in, you know, the $70,000, it's all in to clean it up. They really think that for 70 grand, they're going to clean up all of the legal issues with regards to title and taxes and everything else? So the city's got clear title to be able to transfer this?
That has been my estimate. So again, you know, we, we don't know all the probate issues and we do not know the status of the bankruptcy case. The estimate given by Attorney Sedell when we just recently discussed this was a certain amount per parcel, and I estimated on the high end. So it was, he said between 45 and 70. So I've asked for 70 because you never know. And of, of course, you know that, you know, once you start delving into title issues, you know, it's like opening a can of worms. So you never, you know, you don't know this. This would get us through certainly the, this fiscal year and hopefully next, if there's anything that would be needed after that, I would be able to absorb that in my purchase of service, hopefully.
Yeah, so I just, just for the public's point of view, because the neighbors have lived with this, you know, for decades. And so cleanup does not mean we're cleaning up, you know, physically cleaning up the property for the $70,000, because I think that's a bigger, much bigger number than what we're talking here.
Right. And no, this is not a physical cleanup. Let me, I was speaking in lawyer terms of a title, title cleanup.
Yep, I, I got it. I just didn't want people thinking that it was going to be pristine when we're done here for this, because I seriously doubt it. But I, I will absolutely support it because it's, it's a mess.
Um, are there, are there buildings there or there's just lots? I, I'm not familiar with the property.
To be quite honest with you, I'm very unfamiliar with the property. It has, I don't think you can see it from the road, from the look on the GIS. It looks as though it's a long driveway into a large parcel in the back, sort of like a flag lot. I've never been up there before.
Okay.
I, I don't normally do site visits.
There were originally some structures. In fact, I think there was actually, now I'm going back, I have not been up there recently. But I think there was actually one of the condos or maybe two that were actually inhabited. So.
I think part of the problem, and not to delve too deeply into how many title issues there can be, but I think some of our takings actually took condo, you know, took basically the building but didn't take the dirt. So we, we have, it really is a patchwork of title ownership up there. So it is, I do believe that there was at least one building at, at one point. I don't know what it looks like anymore, or if there's anybody.
No, nor do, nor do I.
And do you, do you have a rough estimate of what the property would be valued at as a whole if we do get clear title to everything?
That I don't know, no. But it is, I mean, it is a large parcel on the GIS. Again, I, I wasn't able to determine, it didn't have an acreage listed, and without looking at each individual deed, and again, there's 25 different parcels to try to call out what each one would have for acreage. I was not able to determine that. I just can tell that it is, it's a, it's a pretty large parcel up there.
Okay.
We have, I can say that we have had inquiries in the 14 years that I've worked for the city. We've had and to purchase it from the city of Westfield, but unfortunately we don't own it. So there'll be an appetite for, for someone to do something developmental out, out there. So there has been interest over the past couple of years anyways.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay, any other? Okay, so we have on the floor a motion to approve $70,000 from free cash to Law Department. So Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three to nothing.
Thank you. Sorry about all my technical difficulties tonight.
Glad you made it. Okay, so we did 10, did 11. Now we are on 12 with the Fire Department. So I am, I'd like to end to approve the appropriation of $112,910 from free cash to Fire Department Supply Account for supplies for replacement fire apparatus.
So move, second.
Motion made and seconded. And we're supposed to have Captain Kane who's with us. Explain what this is for?
Yeah, so we're specking out a new truck. Every five years, we're on a five-year replacement plan. And the ambulance fund, I don't know if they're doing it this time, but the ambulance fund can purchase the vehicle, but it can't purchase the equipment on the vehicle due to technicalities of the finance. So this is to outfit the new vehicle with all the necessary tools on it. Um, that's a total of $112,910. And Captain Lantini, he's the one that, he's on the truck committee and he, he specs out all the tools for the trucks. He's the one that compiled the list.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, no, no problem with any of that. Do you notice it include the, you know, the light bars and all the other, that's, that's an all-in cost? Or is the ambulance picking up all that cost?
Vehicle's going to be separate. This is just to outfit the vehicle with the tools. Terms and all that stuff that's a fix to it will be a separate.
That's over there. Separate, separate but picked up by the ambulance account.
Yes, I'm not sure. The chief didn't clarify. He said, he stated that the last engine was purchased with the ambulance enterprise fund, and he's working with Mayor McCabe, purchasing director and auditor to figure out how they're going to appropriate funding for the new one. So however the new one gets paid for, this is just for the tools to outfit the new engine.
I guess we want to make sure that it's going to get paid for before we buy the tools.
Right, I, I'm not sure if they're, the mayor might be able to speak on this if they're, have already secured funding for that. If it's coming out of the ambulance fund, and I don't want to speak on a churn, that's why I'm not saying it, but I think the last few have been paid for out of the ambulance fund, but
They absolutely have.
by my boss, okay? So I, I would assume that's the plan for the new one, but.
Madam Chair, could we just confirm that there's some plan to buy the, I wouldn't want to buy the tools that don't go, no problem buying, it's, it's a great use of the ambulance fund. So if that's what it is, great, but.
Okay, I, I do see comment? Or do you want to table it? What do you?
Counselor Sullivan, I, I can comment on it. We are not buying the equipment without buying the vehicle. We're working on trying to buy the vehicle right now.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll trust you.
Chicken or the egg?
Okay, any other comments or questions? No? Okay, so we have on the floor a motion to approve $112,910 for free cash to Fire Department. So Counselor.
I just, the mayor did, if it's figured out before next Thursday night when we vote on this, can you just give me a heads up that, how we're buying the truck?
Okay, so Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three, zero. Okay, and next I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of $80,000 from free cash to Fire Department Purchase of Services Account for electronic locking system for all Fire Department exterior doors.
So move, second.
Motion made and seconded. Captain Kane, can you explain this to us?
So Travis, the local president touched on this, the three stations that are manned, we just have a key code to, to get in there. And anybody that is privy to that code can get in at any time. And as we get a call, there could be, they could be totally dumped and no one manned. And specifically for the road and then the one by the Pike Station 3, those more often than headquarters don't have anybody in there because they're, they're out running calls. So this would greatly enhance the, the security of the building. And not only that, but timestamp of who went in and everybody either have a FOB or a key card. So that's in essence what it is.
Questions or comments? Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll support it. Why isn't it as simple as changing the key code?
I think we probably could. I, I don't, Brian might be able to touch better on that, but I think the, the amount of times we'd have to touch or change the key code, I think it's, uh, I don't know, Brian would be able to answer that better, but I think this tracks the movement of everybody too, as far as
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. So there's a motion to approve the 80,000. Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three, zero. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, take care.
Bye-bye. Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of $55,000 from free cash to the following short-term debt accounts. $30,000 to principal on short-term for Project 2358 Southampton Road. Target, $25,000 to principal on short-term debt for Project 2592B Airport HVAC. So.
So move.
Oh, yes, motion made and seconded. Thank you. Treasurer Barnes, can you explain this?
Sure. So what happened here is back during fiscal year 2020, incurred some spending. Uh, incurred some spending, um, project two, three, five, eight is the Southampton Road, uh, turnpike interchange design work. And then two. Five numb HVAC improvements at the airport. Um, so at the end of the fiscal year, uh, we had to issue a ban to cover these costs. Um, these were already existing bonds that had been approved. Um, and this was just additional spending against those bonds for the intended purpose. Um, the ban was then renewed in June of two thousand twenty-one. And now we're approaching the end of the year where we'll have to sell that bond. Um, but in reviewing debt projections with the mayor, um, the idea came up of why don't we pay these off instead of bonding them for the eight to ten years that would be allowed for these types of projects? And incurring the interest cost on that, uh, the interest cost would be about eighty-five hundred dollars. Uh, again, that would depend on what the interest rates are at the time the bond. Um, so we don't have. Um, in order to, to pay these back without selling the bond, we, we. You have the risk line or the debt payment line, um, so we could make the payment from the city instead of selling a bond.
And, and just, I'm not familiar, you said the band?
A ban is a bond anticipation note. So when, when the city, uh, starts, say, a construction project, uh, we internally fund paying the invoices to the contractors or the vendors, um, through an internal borrow process. At the end of the fiscal year, those internal borrows have to be repaid. Um, and to do that, we would sell a ban or bond anticipation note, which says that, um, in the short future, you know, one to two years, the city would then sell a bond to repay that bond anticipation note. Um, so we renew. Do what's coming to the time where we. After the two years, if you renew it, you're, you're paying principal and interest anyways, um. Um, this would avoid selling the bond. We would just repay the ban and save the interest cost. Uh, the project two, three, five, eight, uh, we could bond that for ten years and two, five, nine, two would be eight years. Um, but given the, the small amount in total, usually a construction project, we'd be, you know, hundreds of thousands or a million. Um, but since this was about fifty-five thousand in total. It off and save the interest cost in the short, short term.
Uh, thank you. I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me how the process works, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the fifty-five thousand from free cash. So councillor Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yes.
Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three, zero. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion. And up seven hundred thousand from free cash to school department, Westfield High School, purchase of lands and buildings account for swimming pool repairs.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Stefan Zasperowski, are you here?
I am.
Excellent. So can you just introduce this and let us know what's happening?
Sure. And first of all, thank you for, for taking this agenda item. Um, as you know, last year, the pool, uh, the filters had broken in and so our, our pool became, uh, not useful to us. And so, um, we had tried to get. During the pandemic, we had some, um, problems securing even people that were willing to do the work, but we did put together a bid document. And we had put the, the funding together at the end of last year, uh, when I say last year, the end of June, to make, uh, award a bid. And we, we were told it was gonna be around nine hundred thousand-ish. And, uh, and then actually when the bits came back, it was one point six and one point seven million dollars. So we did not, we rejected the bid, determined there's something wrong, probably with the bid document. We had that relooked at. Uh, we went out to bid again and, um, waited a few months, figuring in the height of the pandemic, it really probably wasn't a good time to. Get full repair. Um, so now we have a bid that's reasonable. And, uh, what happened with the funding that we had last year to fix it, actually went back to the city because it came. Uh, again, we opened the bids on June twenty-eighth, and I know Tammy and Shannon are on as well. But I, just in terms of the importance of the pool, um, I, it is important in terms of curriculum at Westfield High School. It is, uh, utilized by our students, um, what it was when it was functioning. And we also have, uh, really a, a fantastic swim team, boys and girls, and then we have a rich tradition of that here in Westfield. And to not have a pool has been a struggle. Uh, we've been using Westfield State's pool where, but having to work around their schedule, which has been challenging. And we also rent for now from the Boys and Girls Club as well. So we have two spots that we can use, but the Boys and Girls Club doesn't have a diving board, so that becomes, um, an issue to that end too. So Tammy, I don't know if you wanna add anything, cause Tammy, Tammy, I've been working with Tammy and Brian for, on this process. And of course Shannon from the business office as well.
Yes, I can, yeah, as I say, I can add some to it. Um, the superintendent is absolutely correct. When we bid it out, um, the pricing came so much more than what the estimate had been told to us by an estimating agency. On both. Line of that bid document to find what actually happened in it. Um, there appear, appeared to be some, um, issues between the general contractor, what he was supposed to carry and what some of the subs were supposed to carry. So the bid document was completely redone. Um, at no cost to the city of Westfield, the design firm took that on completely themselves. We also waited till after the summer months to actually rebid it. Um, the design firm was under the impression that possibly that was causing some of the increases was that pool companies, um, and these G C's just didn't have the time to do the pool. So we have redone it. Um, the base bid has come in back to where it was supposed to be. Um, and we. We are separately, so that actually is a separate bid that I'm doing currently right now because the tile sub bids were three times the amount that they should be. So at the advice of the state of Massachusetts Attorney General's Office, they had allowed us to rebid that separately and not included in the G C bid. So all in all, um, this does repair the filters, um, and it does get the pool back to where it needs to be. Um, and everything is code compliant.
Thank you, Tammy. And again, we had the funding last year, we were ready to go, but because we opened the bids on the twenty-eighth, the funding we had set aside was returned to the city.
Okay, so councillor Bean?
Yeah, um, so are we doing tile work or no?
Yes, Tammy's just, we're doing a separate bid for that. It's just not, it's gonna be separate.
Do we have any idea where we are with the cost of that? I mean, is this gonna be a, back to one point two million or what, what? What are we talking about?
Yeah, according to the, um, the design firm and. Uh, L companies, the tile work that we need, um, to get us to code compliance should be underneath fifty thousand dollars.
Councillor Sullivan, do you have a question?
No. Just to support this more, um, I do come at it, um, as a former swim team parent. So, uh, I think, uh, the program from a curriculum point of view, but also swim team, um, you know, really does a lot for the community. Um, and certainly for the students that, uh, participate in the, in. And this is, you know, this is really part of the building. Um, and I think quite honestly, if we don't repair it, I think that's, uh, pretty large embarrassment that we've got a large pool and a, uh, um, facility up there that is totally offline. So I think that makes a statement about the quality of life in the community. So I could not be more supportive of this.
Councillor Bean, you had your hand?
Yeah, you, you know, I, I'm absolutely in favor of it. Um, obviously the, the pricing. Help, seemed like the pricing was way out of whack. Um, since I have the mayor and the superintendent here in this meeting, um, I would love to, uh, investigate, uh, back when being someone who grew up in that area, um, used free swim back thirty, forty years ago. Um, with residents going to use the pool access and so forth, um, it would be great to get back to that. Uh, I don't know when the last time we did. That I know it's always challenging with the building being open and lifeguards and custodians and so forth. So if there's a way to maybe put some minds together to try to get maybe one day a week, a couple of days a week where someone can swim there for an hour or two. And I just know as a kid, it was, it was, it was a good thing. So, uh, especially when, when things cost like this, although inexpensive when we look at a pass bid, it's still a, a good chunk of money. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to do with comments from councillor Sullivan um, on this particular issue. And, um, I, I think it's just underutilized really. Uh, especially at the time when the buildings are, are closed. So if there's a way to get them open and. Internet, that would be great.
Right, and just so you know, the mayor and I have already talked about that. We, if the, the idea has been planted, now we have to do the work to see how we can do it.
Yeah, and I know it's not easy. You know, it's just good that we're talking about it and trying to do something, so.
Yeah, and I, I would like to comment too and dovetail on councillor Bean's comments. I know my cousins taught swimming up there in the summer, you know, thirty years ago. Was a great program, teaching kids to swim as a light skill. I, I'd love to see it utilized more myself. Um, so, hope that can happen. All right, so the motion on the floor, any other further comments? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve, um, appropriation of seven hundred thousand dollars from free cash to school department. So councillor Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councillor Matthews King, yes, motion passes three, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The transfer of one thousand two. Seventy cents within the Public Works Department Highway Division Fiscal Year Twenty-two Supplies Account to Fiscal Year Twenty-one Supplies Account for a prior year bill.
Yep. So move, second.
So, okay, motion made and seconded.
Ma- madam chair, can I just ask who money is?
I, I don't know, should I, do they need to identify themselves?
It's for the record.
Just, I mean, public commentary is fine, but we're outside public participation. Just wondering, I, go ahead, I don't wanna slow it down.
Okay. Transfer?
Yep, hi, good evening, um, Joanna, the budget analysis here with me is, as well. Um, so this one, um, in particular is for, uh, for, uh, un, un, unleaded gasoline. It was a credit, um, a credit for a different invoice was. The vendor had already applied it to the credit invoice and processed the payment to it with the credit applied. Therefore, the invoice was short paid. Paid the credit, uh, which needs to be, uh, paid. The twelve, that's the, that's the amount we need to pay.
Okay, any questions?
Just, cause I think I'm presenting this one. Roberts Energy is gas?
Uh, it can be both. Um, this was for unleaded gasoline, but we do buy diesel from them. Um, depending what, you know, contract at the time they're under.
Okay.
And the D P W does manage the majority of the fuel for the entire city. So there's one, you know, charge backs to police department, fire department, whatever.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, motion on the floor to approve the transfer, councillor Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councillor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three, zero. Okay, next one. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the transfer of a hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents within the Department of Public Works Sewer Wastewater Treatment Division from Fiscal Year Twenty-two, purchase of services accounts of Fiscal Year Twenty-one Purchase of Services Account for a prior year bill.
Okay, this one is, uh.
Wait, wait, wait.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Okay, thank you. Can you explain this one as well?
Yeah, sure. Um, these do happen occasionally. This, um, this is for a freight charge for an item that was ordered by wastewater. And, uh, unfortunately, the freight charge, um, charges were not included in the quote and, uh, you know, so therefore we, we owe shipping charges. Those happen once in a while that, you know, the vendor or whatever doesn't, um, doesn't include the freight charge. Or they don't know the freight charge. That happens more often than not. They don't know it till it's actually shipped.
Can I just ask, do you know what was shipped Fran, off top of your head?
I, this one I do not know. I certainly could give you that information.
That, that's, that's fine. It, it's a part of some sort?
The supply and insurance, and it's a supply that was ordered for wastewater, um, it's a reactor.
Oh, from Hawk, yeah, it's a, yeah, let's see, it's a, a hundred and fifteen volt reactor, uh, two-block reactor, um, which is part of a Hawk, uh, system, which is our, um, um, our chemical analyzers.
Okay, great, perfect.
Part of it, yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Lost me at reactor.
Just for the record.
Wait, councillor Bean, what would you say?
I said you lost me at reactor.
Okay.
Just for the record.
It's a chemical analyzer, come on.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve a transfer a hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents. Councillor Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councillor Matthews Kane, yes, motion passes three, zero. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the transfer of six hundred and two dollars and eighty cents within the Public Works Department Sewer and Wastewater Division Fiscal Year Twenty-two Supplies Account to Fiscal Year Twenty-one Supplies Account for a prior year bill.
So move, second.
Motion made and seconded. Fran, can you explain this one as well?
Kind of a two-parter here. The first one. There's, uh, for Cintas uniforms, um, which obviously, you know, our employees have uniforms. The, um, this particular invoice was sent to the school department in error and we, um, re- recently received it, um, and we're just trying to settle that one up. And the other second half of that is twenty-two dollars and eighty cents, deals with a vendor that had, um, um, that has again sent along an invoice for payment via email to a retired employee. Um, and, you know, kinda got lost in the shovel, shuffle if you will. Um, that's typically not how we handle invoices, but sometimes that happens where, in this particular employee, I believe this is Bob. Yeah, it's someone that really stays on top of a particular project or whatever. And he hands the, uh, paperwork in, COVID and whatnot, kinda messed that up, plus his retirement. So that's where we are with that.
Okay, is, is this the same? I think within this calendar year, we're, we, there was a unpaid bill because of.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
This dis. Discussion about like changing things so that bills no longer go to employees? Has that been implemented?
I mean, yes and no, but it's, sometimes it's not the worst thing in the world. In this particular one, I believe it was for, uh, Wilchem Scientific. I mean, you're not talking big, you know, big items, um, trying to think what this is. Uh, a wick for a hundred milliliter alcohol burner and, um, galvanized, um, oh, and, uh, uh, I think there were some nitrate gloves or something that was purchased, but I don't know, that's Cintas. The, the one I'm talking is the, um, is for the, for the, yeah, the Wilcom chemical. So Bob had just done that on, you know, was kinda managing to, and get retired and. That's where we're at.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yeah, uh, it, it's just bad business practice to have employees be getting the bills. I mean, there's gotta be a central place to go. I mean, if you wanna have somebody review them to make sure they're legitimate and pro- proper, that's, that's fine. But the, you shouldn't have employees getting bills. And here's a perfect example why. It, it just, you know, there's one central place for them to go.
Yes, and that's the majority of those do happen, this particular vendor. Um, sometimes it happens by the vendor response to the person that's ordering the part, using their email. That happens sometimes. Um, it's, it, obviously we don't try to make a habit of it, but it does happen. And it should go to the D P W, you know, either the D P W general, D P W, um, uh, email and or, you know, office staff like Hannah or someone like that. So we will try not to let this happen again. So we will try not to let this happen again.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to transfer six hundred two dollars and eighty cents, so Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor. Three zero. Last one. Like to entertain a motion to approve the transfer of two thousand nine hundred and four dollars and eighty six cents. Within the Public Works Department Water Division Fiscal Year Twenty Two Purchase of Services Account. To Fiscal Year Twenty One Purchase of Services Account for prior.
So move, second.
Motion made and seconded. Fran, can you explain this one as well?
Yeah, so a two part, one again, um, the first part being the two, uh, the, uh, one thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars and ninety cents. Uh, due to the Westfield Gas and Electric, um, they, in their billing process, they overlooked, uh, internet service. The, um, the new treatment plant on Owen District Road and two bill, and two bills were recently received from them, um, for that amount. So that's the amount we owe them for a billing error on their part.
So just asking you to repeat, you're saying Westfield Gas and Electric was billing for internet?
We have, yeah, we have Whip City Fiber out to the Owen District. East Mountain Road and. Where some, we had internet service, uh, going out there to some construction trailers and then things were transferred over to the plant, you know. And, um, I think there were some location, um, uh, confusions or something on, confusion on their end. And then, you know, the bills finally, uh, adjusted themselves and that would be the period of. Yeah, September. Nineteen, uh, yeah. June twentieth and July twentieth and July and June twenty one.
Okay, I I just found the bill confusing, just because I'm familiar with, excuse me, gas and electric. And it's not billed through Whip City Fiber, and then the bill said gas zero, electric zero, and then other. And then it was a large bill, but you're saying that was for internet.
Yeah, first, I'm, you know, I don't handle the gas and electric bills and the fiber bills, I don't believe. This fiber bill.
The city for internet gets billed through.
Yes, I mean, perhaps Tammy could weigh in on that, but.
The bill is a third charge on our bills.
Tammy, can, can you?
Yeah, they're, they're correct, our, um, our fiber charges are all on our one bill that comes in from the gas and electric. So when I see my charges for City Hall, they're just listed on one invoice.
Okay.
So they're, they're correct, and and this, this happened, um, Fran is correct, there was a miscommunication, I think, between the construction. And then, um, who was getting the bills, and then the GNE finally caught up, and that's why this bill is late for them.
Okay, okay, thank you for explaining, it just, they look different than the ones I get in my house. All right, any more questions or comments? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the transfer of two thousand nine hundred and four dollars and eighty six cents, Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor. Motion passes three zero. And I'd like to entertain a final motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews, yes.